To wait a minute, or do you want, I guess we have a forum.
No, forums ready to go.
All right. I will call the meeting to order at six oh four. Or the Thursday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting and workshop. And budget meeting and workshop, and if everyone would be interested in rising to say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
And I will call the role of Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Gross. Mr. Gross. It's cool. Ms. Hamel is here on Zoom, however we count that. Ms. Nixon, Ms. Powell, Ms. Race.
Here.
And Mayor Conley is here. I'm going to wait to see about excusing people to see if. Sound good, and then we can always make a motion to excuse them later. Public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Okay, so the person must not have got here. Obviously, didn't get here, who told me they were gonna try to get here?
Ms. Howell. You have a public comment, would you like to make a public comment at this time?
Not at this time.
Anybody else? All right, moving on. Um, budget works, I'm a little confused about budget workshop public notice. We already did that, right?
Just put it in there for a quick sec.
Oh, okay, I'm like, I'm pretty sure that we posted that as a public notice, Mr. Manager, because if we didn't, we had a problem.
Try to make sure that we actually put the public notices in the agenda, so we have proof that we did it.
Got it, okay. Well done then. So adoption of the agenda, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. Motion carries, the agenda is adopted, consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member and does not require the support of other council members. Motion to approve the Red Hawk Utility easement agreement with the Cedar Springs Public Schools and authorize the mayor to sign the document on behalf of the city is what we have on the consent agenda.
Motion that we adopt the consent, consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no. Moving on, budget workshop, woohoo.
Here we are.
We're so excited. Budget workshop, A twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three draft city budget discussion. Look at you, you stapled yours. Oh, it was stapled, I guess it was. Okay, so Darla, Mike, who wants to take us to where?
Falcon, I haven't heard you speak yet, are you, can we, can we hear you when you speak? Just disappeared too, so bad timing.
Oh, bummer. All right.
I guess we're done.
Let's go get some green.
We're hearing bits and pieces, but nothing resembles.
See, I heard.
Can you hear me now?
Again, a little bit here and there, but we may need you to call in on the phone.
We said.
What number?
What number?
What phone number?
Is gonna give it to you. Very sure she's a little bit further north than Greenville.
Send her best wishes, our best wishes to her dad.
I, I do appreciate the anti-Greenville joke.
Amy came from Greenville.
And we've forgiven her for that.
Greenville is sad that we got her. Yeah.
You know, in five years, there's only been one festival I've gone to out here.
Besides Red Flano or Red Flano? Oh. Have you been to Tulip, Terry?
Previous to coming here, yeah, as a kid, we used to go.
That was a long time ago.
He's the louder than me, so.
I think he checked out.
Um, let's, let's go ahead and take a look at the organizational chart. Anybody have any questions on that? That's always like the thing on the front of the page. I feel like we're pretty good on that, but um. I do have a little bit of a, who does the Kent County Fire Department or the Kent County Sheriff's Department answer to? Do they answer to the manager? Do they answer, because like, there's no line.
Yeah, so that's a good question. I mean, I did the day operations, I work very closely with Sergeant Probst. Not sure I'd say a relationship, relationship is that he responds to me or follows my directions. So probably. And this is just my guess, not having seen a contract or anything, he probably report to the council.
Okay.
But on a day-to-day basis, obviously, council's not.
The directive of, the council did create the contract. That was before, when we dissolved. And then contracted. That was under Jerry, like I could.
Something we can look into and try to figure that out.
Again, not that I have any, not that I think it's not functioning correctly.
Yeah, you just question.
But it should just, we should prob, there should probably be a line. Somewhere, it should go somewhere.
We do have a good working relationship with the sheriff.
Absolutely, and they've done, been doing a wonderful job for us. The rest of it, any questions on that? I know there was a question at one time about like who the assessor answers to.
Yeah, so another interesting thing about the assessor. Of course, we share our assessor with the township.
Right.
And he will tell you that I don't tell him what to do. Not so much that I couldn't, but I find a philosophical problem with telling the person who sets the, essentially your, your budget.
Right.
How to do their job, so. I pretty much don't tell him what to do, he follows what the law says.
Right. I know we'd had an issue at one time.
You said you share with who, or shares with?
Grand Rapids Township.
We'd had a, not with the current assessor, but with the previous one, and trying to get some clarification on some questions and asking them to come in and speak to council, and the response was, you know, I don't work for you. Well. I, I think you can do.
Can you hear me?
Uh, we can, but we've got a little bit of feedback, we're gonna have to work on that just a little bit too. Uh, so one thing I would point out to council here is that. I'm trying to bring in an assistance of some kind. Uh, we do have that budgeted for, I'm currently working with the Villa de Sparta to possibly share that. Awesome, both of us. Um, and then we may decide to here again, uh, split the deputy treasurer, deputy clerk position, maybe. Haven't figured that quite out yet, but for the current time, that's what our organization looks like.
And that's in the budget.
Yes.
We've been talking about doing that for a while.
Maybe you can answer my, I do have a question, maybe you can answer it.
I'll try.
I, I notice in each, like, little section, subsection of the, um, agenda or, um, budget. Are they, are they taking people's income or, um, salaries and splitting them into, yeah, okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to.
Sure, so some cities will put the entire agenda in one line item. But to make it more, I guess, appropriate for what the work is that I do, you'll see part of my salaries in the water and sewer budget, and some of it's in general administration.
Right.
Roads, you know, because part of my job involves dealing with those sections.
Right, and, and like, some of the DPW. Um, salaries were split up like far as street cleanup or, you know, those things, okay.
Makes it harder to read, but it makes it better for auditing.
Well, yeah, because that's where the, I mean, they should get paid out, I guess, out of that, if that's where the budget is.
Out of that pool.
There are other ways of doing it, which I think are a little bit easier to understand, but it doesn't really change how it operates.
Right.
And this also is a way of being able to track, like, how much work we put in for a specific thing.
Yes.
Which is also helpful, like, if we had a big brush thing and our DPW have to go do that.
Ready?
Yes. It's reflected, yep.
Um, Ms. Falcon, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yay.
I'm here.
Okay, you sound great now.
Okay.
You send our well wishes to your dad.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, Ms. Falcon, we just went through the organizational structure, um, they were, the council had a couple minor questions. Mostly about how we split our salaries up into various departments. But, uh, that's what I said, I think we're ready for you to take over if you, uh, if you're ready.
Okay. Um, on the next page, we have our millage rates. Um, I updated the twenty-one, twenty-two actual and put in the proposed twenty-two, twenty-three. We won't know for sure the actual millage rates until around June. That's when we're notified by the other taxing, um, authorities of what they're going, what they've been approved to levy. The very, um, in the middle of the page, their average residential taxable value. Um, taxable value goes up every year, either by the rate of inflation or five percent, whichever is less. Uh, this year it was a little high, three point three percent. Um, that's the highest I've seen it in many, many years, so our average residential taxable value went up to sixty thousand one forty-nine.
So, Ms. Falcon, while we're on this page, I would like to point something out to council, uh, and that is you'll see in the city library portion. Um, so, and Darla, correct me if I'm wrong on the nomenclature here, but. Um, my understanding was that the library had been steady at zero point eight seven, seven two mils, but did have the authority to go up to a certain other higher percentage or higher millage. Um, so with the, with the new library director, I think we're gonna try to increase their funding a little bit. Uh, so they can start taking on some more of these ambitious projects we've wanted them to get into for the last several years.
We go more than point eight eight?
So, uh, the current proposed is one point two four two nine.
Oh, I didn't know we could go that high.
So, Ms. Falcon, off the top of your head, is that about thirty thousand more dollars?
That's correct.
So they're gonna be seeing, um, that plus some other things we've stuffed into the budget. The overall millage rate did go up slightly.
I, I think that's a good thing. We use our library a lot. As a community.
Great addition of the community.
Yeah.
Anybody in council have any questions on that?
On the next page, we have the annual, um, tax bill. So it's just that, that previous amount, sixty thousand one forty-nine times the proposed millage rates. Um, so ma, maybe a couple hundred dollars for the average residential homeowner. They'll see, um, about a two hundred dollar increase in their tax bill in twenty-two.
And we're now just seeing the roll-on for the fire station, correct?
Um, this will be the second year that we've levied the, um, just over two mils for the fire station.
Oh, I see now, I, I didn't look up correctly in the column. And I see it's went up just a hair, is that, um, is that causes to pay the bond off more quickly? Or the millage piece of it off more quickly when our values go up more?
Possibly, yep, this millage rate comes from, um, our bond council. So I'm, I'm going by their schedule, but if, if our taxable value continues, continues to increase, um, there is the potential to pay that off early.
I just wanted to clarify that we aren't actually paying more for the fire station.
No.
So, I, I had someone ask me that.
Uh, Ms. Falcon, I'm seeing here on this page, uh, CSPS operating started in twenty twenty-one at almost a thousand dollars while being zero before that. Is that an error of some kind?
Yeah, the operating millage is normally, um. It was eighteen mils, now it's rolled back to seventeen point something. It's on the previous page, seventeen point nine eight seven four. Seventeen point eight one six eight, yeah. Those shouldn't be.
Money in the category.
Yeah.
Been, um, logged in in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, or, well, through.
Twenty.
It's through twenty twenty-one is the first. And I'm assuming they're just not plugged in, it's not that they.
Correct, yep. Yeah, there, there should be an amount there, well, unless it's, unless it's the homestead. If it's the person's homestead, they would not pay any school operating.
Yep, and that's why I think I'm getting it, because I think this is, uh, average residential taxable value, which should not include. Homestead there.
Yeah, it should be forty-six mils instead of sixty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll fix that.
And then the general fund out of revenue expenses. Any questions?
So, Darla, I'm seeing two fifty-eight, four fifteen. Can you talk to me about what might have caused that?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't have that in my head right now.
It's fine, it's just, uh, it's a lot of money.
Yep.
I'm assuming that's the amount we pulled out for the, to, for the, um. The, the, not the bridge, but the water that we just approved for us.
Well, th, this is money going back into the fund balance, I think.
Oh, I assumed this was the money coming out.
Yeah. No, we brought in two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty-eight thousand more in revenue than we spent, so.
Oh.
That went into fund balance.
Yeah, I mean.
Is that part of the money we're allocating for the bridge?
No.
Nope.
This is last year.
Nope, that's separate.
So, I mean, it's a good thing.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
Just curious what happened there, okay.
This is where we just took the forty thousand for that new fire truck.
Right.
We have dipped into this a couple times. But, yeah, that was a good thing at the end of last year.
Is that just the property taxes rebounding?
No, this would have been us.
No.
Advocate, allocating it in our budget to do something, and then either we didn't do it or it costs less money than we anticipated it would cost.
Maybe some of it's some, some marijuana money that we. Weren't really sure how much we were gonna bring in.
There are some.
And didn't really have a plan to spend it.
Yeah, did we not spend as much on the fire station as we thought?
Oh, we spent.
No, we spent more on that, we actually had to.
Yeah.
Did to pull some out of general fund to cover to not, to go.
No, I mean, it's not a bad thing, I was just.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of where it came from.
Uh, generally, we'll find out this type of stuff when we get to the audit.
Yeah. It's not bad, I. Okay, unrestricted fund balance.
So the next page is just about two hundred fifty-eight thousand adding to what was already in fund balance. So we're up to, uh, one point three million. Humilative.
That's unrestricted, so.
So that doesn't count anything if you have earmarked.
Correct.
Correct. Yep. Available to spend.
Okay.
This next page, twenty-two, twenty-three, all fund summary. You might either wanna mark this page somehow, or if your booklet is stapled, pull it out, because I'm gonna refer back to this page. Um, pretty much every fund that we go through, there's some extra information on this sheet that makes it helpful when we're going through the fund. Which brings us to the general fund, um, have some new pictures there, we've got some new development going on. Just a picture of our new fire station and our new amphitheater, all, uh, general fund. Categories. As far as general fund revenue goes, um, your very first number there, appropriation from fund balance. Three hundred fifty thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Um, w, we typically don't plug that in right off the get-go, but for the general fund, we, um. On the green and white sheets, we did, but you'll see on that page that I told you to tear out. So we're expecting two point three five two million in revenue and two point seven oh two in expenses. So in order to do everything we have on the expense side, we will need to take three hundred and fifty thousand from fund balance. We, like Mike was saying earlier tonight, we do have a lot of, um. Projects, big ticket items in the budget this year, so that general fund, that's one of them. Um, so the two largest revenues sources for the general fund are property taxes. Um, three point three percent increase in taxable value will equate to more, um, general fund property tax revenue. So that's a good thing. And state shared revenue, um, just a minor bump in that, I, I put in twelve thousand. We won't know that probably for sure till closer to May-June time, um, what the actual numbers are. And then the other revenue I wanted to point out still on the front page there, the marijuana application license fee. We bumped that up to a hundred and forty-four thousand, that's still, um. More application slash licensing revenue. Plus, by twenty-two, twenty-three, we should receive some excise, uh, tax from the marijuana businesses. Uh, really unsure how much and when that comes, but, um, some of these businesses are going on the, you know, heading into the two years, so by now, they sh, there should be something coming back to the cities for that. Any questions on general fund revenue? Hello?
Hello.
They can hear you.
They got you.
I think they're just.
Okay.
Over for a second.
We're, we're trying to decide if we had a question or.
Okay.
Any, any questions? Say, general fund revenue.
Hey, going through the expense side now, um, we'll kinda go through these pretty quickly. There's a lot of departments that if, if there's really no change, there's no big ticket items. That's kinda what I'll highlight is the big ticket items. Um, for city council, little bit less, not a big thing, um. Just that we, we budgeted a little bit less for education and training. Next page, under city manager, like, uh, Mr. Romac said earlier, um, assistant city manager.
I have a question about the cemetery fund. Um, and.
Oh, that's coming.
I'm just concerned, are we budgeting enough for that?
Now, Mayor, can we get to that in a few minutes?
Oh, sure.
She's going through each individual page.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, under city manager, um, we budgeted the fifty-five thousand for the assistant, uh, to the city manager. There's also ten thousand in the DDA fund, um, again, that can be adjusted at any time as we finalize those details. Um, other than that, there is no, no major change under the city manager department.
And I've indicated that we're going to, uh, try to share that person with Sparta, so that should be significantly reduced at some point.
Yeah. If, if we know the details before the April meeting or the May budget hearing, we'll, we'll definitely change them before then. Next page is elections, um, again, nothing, nothing major under elections. They're required by law, so if we are told to have an election, we, we definitely hold them.
That's good.
Next page is the city audit, um, again, this is a required thing annually for our size city. And just a heads up, I was notified by, um, our auditor that he heard the, if you had USDA. Uh, debt, which we do, um, the state is going to require us to have a single audit every year. It's probably gonna be another two thousand dollar expense. Um, it's, it's just a little bit more detail when the auditors are looking over our, our, uh, numbers and. Um, it's another document that's submitted to the state of Michigan along with our audit.
Oh, bless the state of Michigan.
So, if, if that's required, we'll definitely do that.
Of course we will.
Um, city assessor, just a, a minor bump with our contract for our assessing department. We contract with Grand Rapids Township for our assessor, so we were notified of just a little bump there. Other than that, nothing new. City attorney on the next page, um. Realize we're at sixteen thousand eight seventy year to date, but hopefully that should be pretty minimal between now and June thirtieth. So, we'll shoot for twenty thousand again and see if we can stay under that.
It's still excellent. I had seen it at like sixty-five.
And a significant, uh, portion of these numbers also include, you know, some of these major projects we have going, like the EDA, which required a lot of staff, um, attorney staff time.
I'm just saying.
Could be worse.
It's been worse.
Next page is city clerk, um, again, nothing too major under the city clerk department. Pretty same, pretty similar budget. Um, next page is border review, again, pretty much the same budget. Required meetings are, um. March, July, and December, so those are held every year.
Um, Ms., Ms. Falcon, were we proposing any kind of pay bump, uh, to the border review here or not?
We are, yep, um, instead of ten dollars an hour, we were gonna, we were gonna go twelve dollars an hour for, uh, the border review. There's typically three, three members.
My goodness, yes.
Yep.
Thank you to these.
Which they have.
Come in and do this for twelve dollars.
It's a very, very tough job.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, thank you to these people who come in and do this. We should like say twelve dollars an hour plus cookies or something.
We do do that.
Next page is general administration. Um. Pretty much the same budget here as well, this is where a lot of my time is, and the deputy finance director. Time and benefits. Next, we have the IT department, um, little jump here. It's been five years already since we put in our, um, server at City Hall, and it's time to do some upgrading. So it's, uh, we budgeted ten thousand for a server and some cabling. And any other, if they need, um, if we need a new, um, battery backup. That's usually changed at the same time as the server, that's, um, if the power goes out, the battery backup saves us until we have time to power down our computers or if we're in the middle of something, so. Um. Other than that, everything else is routine maintenance. Next, we have city buildings and grounds. Um, so the, the, the budget actually looks like it's going down, but, um. We, we are budgeting next year for a new roof at City Hall. Um. We budgeted that for that this year, but we ended up doing the furnace instead. Um. And then we have twenty-five thousand budgeted under, uh, paving and resurfacing expense. Um. This is the line item paired with the DDA funding that we were able to do some paving, um, the B and B parking lot last year. What is a good example of that, um, this is where the, where the city's general fund would kick in to a part of that. We've got twenty-five thousand budgeted. We talked a little bit about the parking lot at City Hall. I mean, I think we need to brainstorm and, and see if there's any others that need, you know, maintenance or some patching or something. Twenty-five thousand doesn't go too far, but it's something.
If I could point out a few things here, turf SRS, you'll see listed at three thousand. It is very difficult to get staff nowadays. And so they, they are going to help us with the area around the library, which is very fussy work, and Veterans Park. And then the seventy-five thousand for the roof at City Hall. I think we're over budgeting a little bit there. I don't think it's gonna cost nearly that much. Plus, we have had some discussions about perhaps just paying somebody to come in and patch the roof instead of completely redo it. Which I think will be part of a larger overall conversation about how long we anticipate being in this building.
Even if we're not going to stay in this building, we need the roof to not leak.
Yeah, so we do have a couple of identified spots where the leaks are. And so I'm, I'm not saying this is a actuality here, but, you know, we've got the money to do the complete roof. But if we could, for ten thousand or something, fix all the leaks and, you know, then the roof might survive a couple more years.
Right, but ultimately, the roof has to be redone.
Sure, but I don't know. So let's say the Kent County Sheriff's Department moves out next year. And then as part of the West Street project, we make money on the land sales, and now we have a, a money to put a DPW garage somewhere. Now, it's gonna be this huge building for five staff people.
Sure.
So we could, you know, spend seventy-five thousand bucks and give a brand-new roof to the next owners of the building if we end up selling it. Or we could save that money, spend ten thousand on fixing leaks, and then keep sixty-five thousand for whatever the next building.
Yeah, I guess my concern is just if we spend ten thousand dollars to still have to spend seventy-five thousand dollars three years from now, we didn't actually save anything.
Yeah, and that's why we've got it fully budgeted here, but I think we're gonna try to bring in some experts to tell us what's the best course of action.
Okay.
So I got a question. Regarding the turf SRS. I, I think that our cemetery is maintained well. I think it could be better. I think that there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of work to that. I think that having a professional business come in and be able to weed whip around things that happened weekly when I did work for, for the township, so like looking at them doing that instead of like, library, you know what I mean? Like, that's a major deal, and I think that
Somebody's gotta mow the library.
Yes, like DPW could do that, and then
You're saying flip flop?
Yeah, flip it, so turf SRS, I mean, they would be the ones that would go through and keep it maintained. I think that, I know we just don't have a lot of time and a lot of money to do that for the DPW, so I just think that it should be used for something like that, just.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, and I, I know where you're coming from. That would be a, a significant amount of work that would come off the backs of the DPW. We just don't have a quote for it.
Okay.
So we could
It's a question. I think it would be good to look at, you know.
Quote and see.
Yeah.
Can we just not hire more DPW people?
We tried.
A long time.
We had, I think, two applicants, and we did not wanna hire either one of them. Now we're starting to stare into the summer help, which, you know, is generally
What's our, what's our base for DPW?
For the position, for a full-time position, I think it's sixteen-ish dollars, I think.
Okay.
I don't have the number off.
Is that with or without benefits?
Full-time would be with benefits.
With benefits? If we're talking about summer help for lawn mowing?
Twelve to fourteen bucks an hour.
Yeah, that's part of the problem. Are we getting turf SRS for that much money?
I mean, I, I haven't done the hour lease on what turf SRS would do. This was a quote on, we need it done, I think, once a week for X number of months.
Yeah.
You know, and, and mostly the area around the library and the Veterans Park is kind of, you know, it's little pieces of grass.
Right, I understand. I
Morley and Wiggle and Harder Seers Springs, those are, you know, we got these big mowers, we can do those.
Same thing with the, the weed whipping around the graves and the, I mean, I get it, it's, it's
I just know we had this conversation that they only did it like
Memorial Day and then
Three times during the season, and I'm like, and they're hacking it down, you know, so I get that, you know, but if we can have someone maintain it every week and just, it just would, maybe it would just bring up the
I'm just a little afraid how expensive it would be.
Right, and that's just a question that we could just look at.
Can I interrupt here a second?
Yes, please.
So with the cemetery, you're, first, we're gonna have a hard time getting a company that's willing to do that. There is one company that used to spec, just specifically do cemeteries, but there's so much time involved in it that by the time they do a figure on what it would be to maintain the cemetery where you've got it strong trim and everything else, a lot of people find it's just not worth what they want to do it, so for what we're paying turf SRS to maintain a couple of small parcels in a year, you look at it at a per time. I kinda run the numbers on that, and it's about the same as if we have a full-time person or maybe even a little less when you get into string trimming and everything else involved in it.
So Mr. LaRose, while you're, while you're listening and talking, I, I think the question is more, is there a way for us to get away from the old style of weed whipping it down to the dirt? And maybe, you know, weed whip it more often, but less intensely.
So the cemetery right now takes three to four days to
Five people.
Yeah, with five people to get through in string trimmer. So when, when you think about three to four days string trimming the cemetery, that's why it's done the way it is. We don't have that kinda time to spend every month out there.
I guess that surprises me, only because I used to do it for a different township. And we had probably four people on it, and it, we could get through easily one in a day. I mean, these are, this is Plainfield Township, so like, they're not small, you know, and to take days?
Yeah, it's, it's, you would be amazed. You're more than welcome to come out and watch them do it. You can hang onto a string trimmer if you want. Renee, we'll, we'll take you.
How to do it, but I
We're lucky.
Why not?
Lucky, we're leaving the cemetery, going to the parks in the third day.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stones out there, and I don't think you actually realize it on a drive-through how much and how big that cemetery actually is.
I've been there.
And even when we, when I started here, it was still taking us two and a half days to get through it with three people. So it, it's not a small task.
I just, I just think that, you know, it's a important place and it should do the best it can, and if we can get the proper help for you guys, you know, that's what I'm asking for, you know, and, and I just don't know. I just was curious, and I know there's a lot of work. I know it's a lot.
What should we do?
Out there too, if I can. We get several compliments at our cemetery from people that come from townships and other cemeteries. Oh, I was just at this cemetery, then went to yours, and I could not believe how nice your cemetery is compared to some of the surrounding cemeteries. So I, maybe once a year, I might feel the complaint on somebody that's not happy about something.
Okay.
If, if people are pretty satisfied with all our cemetery's maintained.
Yeah.
So, Phil, my question is, what do we do to get you more people?
You know, in this day and age, it's not an easy thing cuz it's not just us. It's everybody.
I know it's not, and I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying, I mean, you're talking to a lady who's been subbing on her prop and on her lunch.
Yeah.
I
So I mean, you could
Who has a, who has a head of custodial who is also driving a bus. So I get it, but my question is, like, what do we do? Is it about money? Is it about hours? Is it about training? Is it about, like, do we need to offer to take somebody in who isn't trained and train them?
Yeah, that's, we're, we're actually looking to do that. We don't have any problem with taking somebody in that's not trained. But even in the last interview process, we looked for somebody that maybe wasn't trained. But the biggest problem, I think, in this day and age is money. And the problem with that is, well, let's say any company out there, ABC Escavating can hire somebody, and depending on the workload they have, they might be able to pay them seven, eight dollars more an hour than what the city of Cedar Springs can because we're on a budget. We have to, we have to balance our budget. And people like the staff I have now, when they came in, they, they're able to look at the big picture. When you add up your wages with your benefits, we actually get paid fairly well. But you have to be able to look at that, and I think the mentality today is kinda going away from that. Maybe people look more at the dollar sign. But I think the big issue here is wages, and the city just doesn't have the ability to pay what some people are willing to pay, and some people just don't wanna do this kinda work anymore, so.
So like adding an extra buck an hour isn't gonna fix it?
That's not gonna solve the problem. It may help, but that's not gonna solve it. I mean, back when I started here, this kinda job was the job that you wanted to get, you know? I don't know that that mentality's there anymore. People don't worry about a job that's stable, even in up and down times and stuff like they used to, I don't think.
Okay, well, thank you. I was just trying to see if there was something we could do as far as like allocating a little bit more money or dividing it up into a part-time thing or
Yeah, we appreciate you asking.
Someone for, and pay them to train them or
Yep, I appreciate you asking. I know Mike and I have had several conversations about this, and I think it's, maybe Mike might have some different ideas than I do, so.
Well, I, I think one of the things that we both agree on is that the summer help that we try to draft each year is a great place to identify people who have a good work ethic. And oftentimes, we want to hire those people on full-time. But, you know, again, often, the problem is, the people who got the good work ethic are the ones who are recently retired from another full-time job, and they, they want a part-time job to be outside, and they don't want full-time work. Or, you know, high school kids who may have a lot of energy, but they're going to college in the fall, so.
Do we have any of our retired DPW people that would wanna come back for a little extra money to mow a library?
I mean, certainly, it's something we've talked about, but I, I don't know how much interest or ability there is there.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm trying.
I'm, I'm with Mr. LaRose. Any council person who wants to come out, we'd, we're happy for them.
Oh, I, I'm not in any way thinking that you aren't doing
No, I know you guys
All that you can.
Have a lot of work.
I'm trying to figure out how to get you more
Better help.
More people.
More people, or some, ease it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Falcon?
Okay. Um, so that takes care of the cemetery page there. Next is the police department. Again, we can, we contract with Kent County Sheriff's Department on this. Just covering the, the deputy and the, and the sergeant's wages. And then our pension from our, when we had our own police department, still comes out of this department.
And then the occasional bank robbery, right?
Yeah.
Extra valuable hours, I'm guessing.
Next, we have the fire department. Not, not any big changes in this one. I think the real change here is realizing that the utilities and the insurance for the new building, compared to the old building, we didn't really know what to budget current fiscal year until we're in there a whole year. So that's really a, a little bit of the increase in the twenty-two, twenty-three requested budget. Realizing the, the full utility costs for a year in the new building. Other than that, it's just volunteers and Mr. Marty.
Do we have enough for, Marty, I know you've turned down funds lots of times. But at some point, you're not gonna be the chief anymore. Do we need to be trying to scooch that up a little bit? No?
We're preparing.
I mentioned Mr. Womack, maybe a month or two ago. The way the community's growing, with the proposed housing and industrial. I mean, I think the city needs to take a hard look at at least one, possibly two full-time staff. With the volume, the increase in coverage that we negotiated with would help to that be enough for everything, maybe Jerry could put in.
I can't hear Marty if he's still talking.
The increased coverage area for Nelson Township, Jerry has seen a little bit of increase in his duties, I speculate too. I, I can see a full-timer, at least one, probably two in the next couple, three years or so.
Okay, but you don't feel like we should be trying to, to get part of that into this budget?
I put a couple of extra dollars in wages and
Okay.
Salary, not some, my salary, but wages. Get the guys up to reasonable, like the house fire over here on Beach Street, not taking a lot of time, but we were there five hours. And that, that figured out to seventy, eighty bucks, you know, per person, so that's asking a lot under them conditions, so.
Would you please run into this burning building and stand on the end of this giant hose and put on all this gear and do it in a moment's notice?
Well, that's, that's part of fighting the fires, cuz everybody
For a nice dinner.
Firefighters fight to get inside where it's warm.
Yeah.
Yes, you do.
I can, I can tell you that firefighters are faster for far less.
I understand, but
Just, just a second, please, okay? Part of the system in the past was based on these people were willing to volunteer and to do. It's just like anything else right now, Marty, if I'm jumping in on you. It has become kind of an income-type thing, just like everything else. So we have to take a look at that and find out where are we. I have some ideas, but I'd like to be able to talk with the chief and possibly the chief from San Lake, as well as a couple, a couple of other people about full-time people that would be shared between, if nothing else, for medical calls, because between the two departments, this one in the one north, I'm beginning to think they need somebody to be able to do it. A large number of the calls that Marty still gets are medical. Fire is a smaller portion, although more demanding.
Sure.
But the training and medical that we do as a fire department, or we provide, is a larger portion of the expense within the department.
Of course.
Okay, and I think it's something that, that, and I've got ideas, but I wouldn't begin to, you know, verbalize them now.
My question for the chief was
Please.
Do we need to allocate?
Mike? I would want to review anything we do with the chief and have a chance to sit down to it, and I would recommend that at some point in time, we get a board set together where this could be discussed with him. Is it something you could address right now by tossing a couple dollars at it? I don't think so.
Well, that was my question for the chief. Is, do we need to be looking at that? And did you, you, you're telling me you already put some money in here?
Well, that was in wages for this new budget.
Okay.
And again, speaking with Mr. Womack, yes, this is a thought, and that, like, I like to use the terminology, we planted the seed. Now we have to make it grow. By watering it, nurturing it, and yes, this is something the council and the city needs to look at for a future, but like I'm saying, a couple, three years, maybe.
As we're budgeting, I wanna make sure that we start looking forward towards that.
Well, with going along with what Councilman Gross was saying too, if, if we get out where we can share services and maybe split the cost, you know, there, there's something to be said for that also.
Sure.
But in answer to your question, Mayor Connolly, that's, yes, it has been looked at. Not in-depth, but it is, is, like I said, we've planted the seed.
I trust your judgment. I also know that our people will work for, will lowball themselves.
Many of them do.
And I know that long-term, that's not sustainable.
Well Well, with, like, Councilor Girl said that, uh, it's about seventy-five, eighty percent of our calls are medicals. And there is such a thing as burnout.
Right.
And with this COVID the last couple of years, a lot of us are, are close.
I, I don't doubt that, which is why I'm posing the question.
Well, I'd like to think of, and maybe more. Or terminology, but if you do a good job, I'll give you a sucker. Okay, you do another good job, I'll give you two suckers, you know, that type of thing, you, you know, you're gonna be rewarded for what you do. And so far, everybody's, and I, I think.
I just know that our people will say, you do a good job, we'll give you a sucker, and they say, okay, we don't need the sucker, we're good.
Yep.
And then they'll say again, we don't need the sucker. And at some point, you know what? You need the sucker.
That's what.
Back when Jerry and I joined in early, late seventies, we were getting paid for the meetings, we weren't getting paid for any of the calls.
I, I get it, I get it.
And this group of guys that I have fortune of being with and helping. Mentor, I guess you would say, would ninety-nine percent of them wouldn't do it for nothing.
And my job is to say, that's not healthy.
Well, no, it's not, but it's because they want to.
I understand, so this, I will move on, but just this mayor and this council. Wants to make sure that we provide the financial supports necessary for the fire department. And I, I remember when that wasn't the way it was.
We have been steadily increasing, uh, wages and other kind of niceties for the department, but you're not wrong. This is definitely something we've talked about and we're looking for it into the future.
I can, I can vouch for that. As the chief, it was a struggle to try to get anything for that department. And it was a shame as the way it was treated at that time.
Yeah, not the way I see it.
It's the way, it's the way now that there's trying to be made up for some past sins.
And I would like to note that, um, Counselor Powell arrived at about ten to seven. Forty-eight. All right, excellent. Any other questions then before we move on from the fire department?
I do have a question, and it, it's the police department. This money, I know that they're here, so when they move, does that change any of this number at all? Because it's, they're not in our bill, you know what I mean? I just.
I, I don't think it would, um, so we have an agreement with them, uh, for the, you know, providing service. Um, I don't know if there's anything in there about, well, you know, we give them a room back here to use.
Like, I just didn't know.
No, I mean, the, the great benefit we see from, uh, using the Kent County Sheriff's Department, besides the fact they're a massive organization that. Bring all sorts of things that we'd never be able to afford on our own, um, is that their increase in cost from year to year is very minor.
That's all I have, thank you.
It also solved a pension issue.
Amongst other things, yes.
I mean, because like the piece of the pension that she talks about where we're still paying for the folks for the pension, and by the way, we absolutely should do that, I'm not advocating we shouldn't. But now that's all, their program is through the state for the Kent County Sheriffs. So we don't have to kick in for that piece of it. And then the other pieces, they can, um, have, like he said, is a mammoth organization. So when we had, um, a place that had basically an ATF issue with gun, guns that were stolen. Like for, to have our smaller police department try to deal with those actual federal crimes. Is much harder, where the Kent County Sheriff has a unit that does that. So it's just that ability to have so much more training and speciality, or when you have a bank robbery. So that's, tha- that's the, and really, um, it's. It's varied slightly, but it's not really like more money than what we were paying before. Maybe even a little less, depending, given the year.
Falcon, you ready?
Yes. Next department is code enforcement. Um, just a little bump in the, in the total amount there, but nothing, nothing new.
Uh, Ms. Falcon, when, when we take issues to court, I, I don't see anything here for attorney fees. Is that just part of the general administrative or, or city attorney line item?
Nope, if, if the attorney specifically says, um, if they bill it on a separate page that says, you know, court for enforcement. Um, it's, it's charged to the professional services expense, the eight oh one account number, I know eight oh three is attorney. Eight oh one is the, is the attorney number in all the other departments. So maybe we just get rid of the eight oh three words or something and change eight oh one to attorney fees.
Yeah, that's fine, I just want to make sure, thanks.
Yep. Next, we have planning and zoning, um, little bit of difference here in the current budget compared to the new one. Um, in the current budget, we did have twenty-eight thousand budgeted for rec plan slash strategic planning. That, that's minimal, going to be minimal, so, um, we didn't budget for that in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Off the top of my head, did we, what was it, about six or seven thousand bucks for the rec plans? And then, um, what was the other portion of that?
We paid, um.
Strategic planning.
Paying the planning commissioners now.
Yeah, but we're, we're talking specifically about strategic planning, so, and then we paid. Mr. Vanderberg.
The two guys we had come in, yeah.
Five hundred.
Uh, fifteen hundred, I think, between the two of them.
So we budgeted twenty-eight and spent less than ten?
Yeah, yes.
And so we did talk about maybe doing, um, the master plan update this year, and as much as we'd all love to get into that. It felt just like a significant amount of work with West Street and the sidewalks and all the other stuff.
Less about money and more about time.
I said, Darla, let's do that next year.
Right.
Next, we have street lighting. These are just, um. We don't pay for a hundred percent of the street lights in Cedar Springs, but this, these are the ones we get bills for, so. We thought, um, consumers would come in and change a lot of our lights to the LED bulbs, but. Apparently they're on the program where they ha- they wait for it to burn out and then they'll come in and put in LED.
Okay, that was my question.
I don't know.
And I thought, didn't we even like buy some light bulbs?
Those are our lights.
Okay.
So all of our city lights have been converted, as far as I know.
Got it. Good enough.
Next, we have community promotions, um, pretty much the same budget, a lot of activities in there, um. The amphitheater concerts at the amphitheater, um, Halloween bike race, historical museum, so on and so forth. Uh, continuing funding all them.
We did put some extra money in there for Halloween candy this year. The city has not, uh, paid for candy in the past.
I think that's.
The next department.
The way that we've done the whole spooktacular, I think has really taken off. And I, I think the city should absolutely participate, being where we are on Main Street.
Yep, and of course, as you know, we've got lots of volunteerism in this room and staff and everybody else, but. I figured, I, I think it was two hundred dollars, that's not into the budget for Halloween candy.
Sounds amazing.
The next budget, you're gonna see a, a pretty big jump here under parks. Um, we have the two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars budgeted to match the DNR grant for playground equipment at the heart of Cedar Springs. Um, if we've applied for the grant, we're expecting it, we, we should budget our half, so, but. Um, I don't, Mike, do you know when we'll know if we get that DNR grant? Isn't it late fall?
Yeah, I think it's August, September time.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I'd also like to point out, uh, add seven thousand if the DPW removes the driveway at Morley Park. Um, Bill, if, if you're listening, maybe you could jump in for a second about exactly what's been budgeted for, but. One of the things we've talked about internally is that drive, kind of a fishhook drive, it's a dirt drive in Morley Park. Um, and frankly, I'd personally like to see it kind of removed and turned back into, um, grassland for the park users. Um, so, Mr. LaRose, is that something we've budgeted anything for this year?
Yeah, it would be seven thousand, Mike, if we remove it. Um, it wasn't budgeted, we would take the seven thousand that's there and basically make that fourteen if we wanted to go through with it. And that would, that's no asphalt, that would be just basically taking the drive that's there, taking both sides off it, making it like a six-foot wide path. Uh, closing it off in the front where the, with post where they drive in now. And leaving at that until next year, we would add some locks and do some paving project, it'd be kind of an ongoing process.
Just so council's aware of kind of what we're thinking about, obviously, we'd need to come back to council for approval for doing that, but.
You look like you have a question, I was.
No, not at the moment, I was just thinking. You know, some people are gonna complain if they have to walk. There's a lot of people picnic over in that one corner, but I think with a nice path, they oughta be able to make it.
I, I think the, the ultimate plan is to have an asphalt path go from kind of the pedestrian bridge that goes over Main Street. Through the park and then meet up the parking lot on the other side.
So it'd be ADA accessible, just not, you just can't drive on it.
Primarily what we're talking about, you know, basically we want to remove vehicles from inside the park.
Yeah, I agree.
So, that, that'll be a multi-year process, though.
Okay, um, just a couple more departments here, unallocated employee benefits, it's just the department that we. Um, like DPW, the uniforms and, and that, that the city pays for them, um, this is where it's charged. And then workers comp for, uh, DPW since they work in so many different departments. Um, their workers comp charge is charged here, so. Same, same budget there.
Does our DPW really not ever take any sick time?
No, that's not sick time, this is just, um, workers comp and their uniforms.
So we have sick time budgeted somewhere else, Darla?
Correct.
Okay.
All over the place.
DPW sick time zero, and I was gonna say, please don't tell me you never take.
Just make sure to recharge Bill's batteries every night.
Next page, we have our debt service, um, year two of our drain assessment, fifty-three thousand dollars. And the last page for the general fund transfers out, so the, we have to transfer the general fund money to the general obligation. Bond fund to actually make those, um, bond payments. The Act four twenty-five payments are to Nelson and Solent Township for the parcels that we have in the agreement. And then, um, transfer to the sidewalk fund, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand of that is the twenty-five percent match for the two CDBG grants that we wrote. And then the additional twenty-five thousand is for the new sidewalk program that we're working on the plan for. And then fifty thousand transferred to the equipment fund, um, we've talked about the equipment fund every year, it's, it's a fund that if the equipment. Isn't out there being used, i.e. a, a light winter, then the equipment fund is not recouping the money from the other fund. For that, so the general fund in the last couple of years has transferred money to the equipment fund.
So, Ms. Falcon, I know you don't have the information in front of you, but we've talked about it briefly, um, could you talk to council about the. Um, kind of the debt that might be coming off of our books either this year and the next couple of years?
I don't know if I have that page in the packet.
Yeah, I mean, even if you wanted to speak about it generally, I know we have two or three, um, bonds that'll be coming off.
Correct, that, that are hitting the general fund is, um, mostly, we'll, we'll continue to have, um. Water and sewer debt until twenty fifty-five, but on that last page, the transfers out page of the general fund, we've got a two thousand twelve. Um, long-term, um, obligation there, two hundred and five thousand is the principal. The, the one that's gonna fall off this next year is the two thousand seven capital improvement loan, um, currently twenty-nine thousand, two fifty principal payment. Twenty twenty-three, and then I think. Late twenties is, is a, another one that will be paid off.
So we'll, we'll maybe we'll just give us an email with all this information, but you know, we're getting, we're getting to a couple of bonds.
Yeah, I feel like it's in here.
Yeah, it is.
And Darla, I apologize for putting you on the spot, we'll get to that one back.
Okay.
And, and just to note that Counselor Hamel arrived at seven oh eight.
Okay, um, so that wraps up the general fund. Um, so to approve all of the expenses, two million, seven hundred, two thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, we do need to transfer three hundred and fifty thousand. Three hundred and fifty dollars from the fund balance. Um, but we have one point three million in fund balance, so in my opinion, I, I don't see why there, we shouldn't transfer that three hundred and fifty. And that, we are way above our twenty percent minimum that we need to keep in the general fund fund balance, so.
Well, so a significant portion of that three fifty is the two ninety-one for the, uh, new playground.
Correct.
All of the, much all of the three fifty is matching funds.
Or something, yeah.
If we get it.
It's not earmarked, but it's earmarked.
Kind of, yeah.
So moving on to the street funds. Two new pictures there, we've got a picture of the bridge, um, we all know about the upcoming bridge project. That will close a portion of, uh, Main Street down here for the, for quite a bit of the summer here, and then. Um, that's a picture of West Beach and Seventh Street, the corner there, that's pretty, in pretty rough shape. We'll have to talk with our engineers a little bit more to see if that's, if we should spend the money and time to fix that, or if there's other local streets that we could spend. Um, some money fixing the paving. So, um, street fund, that's the gas and weight tax that goes into the major and local street fund. We have, um, twenty-five seventy-five is how we, um, seventy-five percent goes to major street fund and twenty-five percent. Of the Act fifty-one money goes to the local street funds. Um, this is the final year that we are actually getting, it's about thirty thousand more. Than the original formula by the state of Michigan, um, it was three, four years ago, the legislature earmarked. You know, for the, the next consecutive years, um, additional funds for roads. And we've definitely used our portion, but, um, just kind of anticipating a little bit less than Act fifty-one money next year. Um, unless the current legislature continues that program for some reason.
I know that Counselor Powell has really been advocating for, forever on our bridge. Um, now that it's here and we have this budgeted, because I think. When you and I, when you first came on council, it was one of your, do you have any?
Just that, they reported it was worth, worst bridge in Kent County, which was kind of hard to believe, so we knew we had to do something. And we kept up with our studies so that we would qualify for the grants.
So, good news, bad news, I was out there today with, uh, Mr. LaRose. Mr. LaRose, you put a lot of work in on this and I appreciate that. Um, and the original start date was May first, it's now, uh, potentially April fifth.
Oh.
So earlier than anticipated, good weather, uh, contractors are available. So we have been telling people May first, so, um, may need to spread the word a little bit, but hopefully early April at this point.
I, I think that's actually good.
Sooner than later. Be off of like Pine Street and this street for the, the frost laws or whatever.
I don't know, Mr. Rose, do you know the, the winter, uh, weight restrictions on Pine Street or Fifth Street?
Okay, so any street in the city does not have winter weight restrictions. We, we're not allowed to do it, as I understand it, so we don't do it. Now, as far as county roads. I can't really say because they usually wait until it doesn't freeze at night or, uh, it's in the mid thirties at night before they'll lift. The weight restrictions, they could come off and go back on if weather changes too.
I was just wondering about the increased truck, truck traffic on the side streets.
Yeah, yeah, there's no restrictions, so they'll be able to travel.
And one of the things, Ms. Powell, uh, one of the things we've planned for is we were originally planning on doing North Fifth Street as a resurfacing project. Uh, but we decided to do that after the bridge project, because we anticipate it'll probably be beat up a little bit. Yeah. Sorry, Ms. Falcon, go ahead.
So the, um, still looking on the major street page there, the very top number appropriation from fund balance, two hundred and five thousand. That is about forty thousand a year, over the last, uh, number of consecutive years, we've been able to earmark that in the major street fund fund balance specifically for this project. We still have, um, five hundred and eight thousand available in the major street fund balance in addition to this two hundred and five. So the two oh five, um, will help the city pay for our, uh, hundred and seven thousand five hundred portion of the bridge project, and then some of the, um, two hundred and some thousand bill that we have to pay our engineers for the project and inspections during the project. Um, so it, it, it's very good that we were able to save two hundred and five thousand for our portion of this project.
Yes.
In other words, smart, our budgeting, Darla, so thank you.
So overall, the major street fund, um, just with this large project in here, we are still, um, twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars to the good. So that will go into fund balance if everything, uh, comes out as budgeted. But we are not proposing any other major street paving this year, we've just got too much going on. Um, on the local street side, again, not as much revenue is brought in on the local street side. Um, although we have a lot of local streets that need, need, um, improvements, and we are budgeting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We want to try this, um, new concept ultra thin that our engineers have, um, proposed for us. So we'll have to work with them, you know, whether it's Seventh Street or Beach, or another street in town, we'll probably start testing that on some of the local roads to see how that holds up, um, for future paving.
So, LaRose, could you speak on what ultra thin is real quick?
So what ultra thin is, is a, a special real fine material that they put down at about an inch, three quarters to an inch thick, that, uh, some of the streets, or some of the areas I was looking at it is, uh, West Street, after they complete the new construction, if we were to ultra thin the, the existing section, it would be a new road and look new for probably the next ten years. Another area was up in the Prairie Run addition, where the streets aren't completely gone, but there's, they're, they're getting beyond the chip and seal kind of repair, so this is basically a thin layer that we, we come in, we put over it, and, uh, gives you a seven to twelve years, as I understand it, of life expectancy.
Do you have to take it off? Like, do you have to do a mill and fill at the end of the year?
No, no, what they, in some instances, um, they may come in and mill the curb line if you have a concrete curb down, so your layer asphalt is right at the same level as the curb, give you a little more crown in the road, but like up in, uh, the Prairie Run there where there are no curves, they would just basically run over what's there, so.
Is that expensive compared to like pothole filling and like all the other temporary stuff you do?
Well, uh, pothole filling, unfortunately, it doesn't cost close to what a road does, but it doesn't last either, so I think if you took.
Good a year.
Right.
Like cost to how much you have to keep on doing it.
Right, right, so there, you know, when we pave a street, I don't have figures, but I can tell you, there's been times where, when I first started here, we would spend, oh lord, we would haul asphalt into the intersection at Main and Muskegon for three, four days, you know, so you figure that's starting to add up, and then, um, after we pave a street, uh, some of the streets that were paved when I first started, I'm seeing to start break up now. And yeah, th- there's a savings, uh, if nothing else, there's a huge savings in labor. By the time you go get asphalt, come back, shovel it, you know, it, it enables us to do other things. I think that's kind of what you were asking.
Yes, exactly, I just have never, and I'm, I've been waiting for technology to, you know, catch up with Michigan winters and roads and stuff.
Yeah.
Figure somebody had to invented something.
Oh, Ms. Hamel, I think it's, y- y- you're, you're, uh, comparing it to pothole filling.
Any, any, like, compared to like what you would have, like, if you were to totally resurface the road.
That's what I'm saying is, I think I would compare it more to a mill and fill versus a pothole filling. And Ms. LaRose, I know you said you didn't have the numbers, but to mill and fill, you know, a, a, a block of road is what, thirty thousand blocks?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Uh, actually, we're doing, not running the calculator, Mike, but we're doing about, uh, one, two, three, about five, maybe six blocks for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's a, that sounds cheap.
Well, so what is, what is an ultra thin cost in comparison?
Oh geez. It's probably twenty-five percent or less of a mill and fill, when I was looking at it, we first start talking about it, so it's, it's a huge savings to mill and fill versus, or to ultra thin versus mill and fill, it's huge.
So there are some obvious restrictions and differences, but it's something we want to try and see how it works.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds fantastic, I'm in on that.
Can you, i- i- I have one more question on this, can we, so, can you do this ultra thin, like, new layers indefinitely at some point?
No.
To?
Yes.
We have to mill and fill, do we have to, do we have to grind back down to the base, do we?
Yes, a mill and fill's not a permanent fix, neither is, you know, in a lot of instances, you, you have to understand too, even a mill and fill, or, I'm sorry, ultra thin isn't a permanent fix. Mill and fill is a more permanent fix, but as, uh, Ashley was saying, there's no permanent fix for roads in Michigan. So, I mean, any road you do, um, eventually it's going to be redone, so, um, they, they figured, like I said, in the seven to twelve year range, depended on what's under it. So, that, that's a pretty good buy, in my opinion, where.
I don't disagree.
Definitely good.
Yeah, where if you look at, uh, oh, First and Second Street where we mill and filled, it, it had to be done, we had no choice in that, it was too far gone to do anything else with. That's probably fifteen to twenty years, maybe longer than that, depending on how much truck traffic's on it, or there's a lot of factors that play into it, so.
And we got, what did we get out of Main Street?
I'm, I'm just laughing because it's not in very good shape.
Right, but I mean, we're doing it again in a year, and I remember when we did it, that was what?
Ninety-eight, ninety-nine, I'm guessing, two thousand, somewhere in that range? So twenty years.
A million dollar mile, yes.
All right, Ms. Falcon?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. LaRose, as always, your expertise is appreciated.
Thank you.
I think that.
Next, we have our rubbish collection fund, um, still proposing to levy a half a mil. Um, this will do, um, brush pickup in the spring, once in the spring and once in the fall, and then pick up our leaves in the fall. Um, we've been, we've had a couple of storms in the last couple of years, and we've been able to help out the residents with extra limbs and stuff as well. Um, so the half a mil will continue to do what we've been offering in the past, and it puts two thousand dollars, um, into fund balance. So, can't really afford to do a whole lot more with, with the money, but we'll be able to maintain what we've been doing.
And that also gave us enough cushion for the storms, right?
Yes, yes.
We didn't have to dip into any fund balance to cover the storms.
Correct, yep. Next, we have the DDA fund, um, just a couple of numbers in here right now, uh, the DDA meeting in March will, um, put a whole lot more detail in here, uh, like I mentioned before, the ten thousand for the Assistant City Manager position is in there, and then some, um, labor and equipment usage for some of the DPW projects that they help out the DDA with. So more information to come on DDA.
Uh, Ms. Falcon, before we leave the DDA, could you just briefly talk about, uh, oh, it's probably in here, the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget? I think it's going up something like.
Yeah, so. Current year, um, we've brought in, uh, forty-seven thousand in tax revenue um, in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, and this is a conservative number, um, sixty-eight thousand four eighty. So that is a, a pretty good jump there, like I said, the taxable value increase of three point three percent definitely helps that. Um, the new development in the DDA, the buildings that have been improved, if we've been able to, um, see any of that development within, you know, last year, um, so as of twelve thirty-one, twenty-one, we'll be able to realize that in twenty-two. Um, uh, when we amended the DDA plan, that, that was the best thing we could do for the DDA. We're actually now able to capture some dollars that we can make a real difference in the downtown.
And Ms. Powell, you're on the DDA board, do you remember what the budget was in twenty sixteen?
Oh, about four dollars.
I mean, I remember, I remember cut, them coming and asking for like, uh, I don't know, it was like eight hundred dollars for signs.
I think it was five hundred bucks a year.
Because they're, they didn't have enough money for signage for like street signs, so this was, and by the way, we owe a big thank you to our city manager.
Yes.
For unwinding that particular knot and then rewinding it so that it works correctly.
Ms. Falcon helped a lot with that.
Okay, we owe a big thank you to our city manager and to our finance director for unwinding that particular knot and re, retying it so that it functions correctly.
Frank Walsh was the first man to develop that, DDA in Cedar Springs, so, so adds up to Frank Walsh, former city manager.
So thank you for that, Ms. Falcon, for your making that happen, that's been, and that's been huge in getting downtown rolling.
Oh, yeah, we got more to go, a lot of things.
Yes, but it is, it is really looking quite fabulous.
It is.
Falcon Library?
And it takes that burden off of the general fund, you know, and puts it in the DDA where the DDA money should be used, so.
I agree.
Next, we have our library fund, um, we said, uh, goodbye to our old director and said hello to our new director. Um, I worked with Kami and the Finance Committee to put the library budget together this year, um, have some wonderful programs going on and, uh, continue to go on there in the library. Um, so right now, um, we are showing a transfer from fund balance in the amount of twenty thousand nine eighty-six. That's the very first amount on the, on the revenue for library fund. Um, however, if we do go forward with levying that additional point three six mils that will bring in thirty thousand, this transfer from fund balance will not need to happen. Um, so, little increase from the, um, Solent Township revenue there as well.
Do we have to do anything to lever, leverage the rest of that millage, or is that a library board fund? Is that a library?
That actually, well, in our budget public hearing, that will happen, um, Rebecca, is that at the April meeting or May meeting, I don't remember.
I, I think the answer though is we have the legal authority to do it already.
Correct.
So long as we put it on paper and then do the public hearing.
Okay, my question was, was it us that has to do it, or is that something that the library board had to do?
The city, the city.
Just to piggyback on that, just to piggyback, Madam Mayor, it is going to be discussed by the library board at this month's meeting, it's on the agenda.
Okay, and again, I'm not suggesting that we don't do it, I just, having sat on the library board, trying to make sure that I understand who has what role and who needs to do what voting. Like, are we just, do we vote to approve what the library board does, or do we take the initial vote? And the answer is, it's us. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Yeah, but the, the detail within the budget itself comes from the library board, the Finance Committee.
Ms. Falcon?
So.
Go ahead, when is the date of the library board meeting?
The twenty eighth, it's the twenty-eighth of this month, and it will actually be at the fire station.
Okay.
The community room is going to be getting a transformation and ready for the Friends of the Library Book Sale that night.
Okay, thank you. And what time? Is it seven?
Seven o'clock.
And Ms. Falcon, does this, uh, budget reflect the, I think, three thousand that we're proposing for additional senior programming next year from the city library?
Yeah, yep.
I have a sure, a question here, so I'm looking at a lot of donations, this is awesome. Does Red Flannel Festival do any donations throughout the year? Or any thing going on in the city?
No, I feel like they used to do a profit share thing, community share. Oh, read to ride, that's right, I, I sponsor that, how do I not know that?
What is that?
Read to ride.
The kids read so many books and then they get tickets to ride at the.
At the carnival?
Oh, yeah.
And I sponsor that.
Okay.
Well, additionally.
And what is the donation, well, like, what, like, what's the total on something like?
I, I want to say the check that I write is three hundred and fifty.
I don't know, I can ask the board and see if they got some numbers.
Yeah, I don't know, I get a letter and I write a check.
It's a lot, a lot of kids, so.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I do it in memory of my dad. I've done that for.
Long time.
Long time.
Since he died.
Since he died, yeah, so two thousand fourteen. Not, right, of course, read to ride.
Um, Ms. How, is there anything you wanted to speak about on this budget?
So, just so you know, um, if we, if we do get the increase, we would actually be able to do some more things.
Of course.
I'm meaning, yeah, a lot of donations on there, that is really how summer reading has been funded. There truly is no set budget for summer reading, it's all donation based, which is great and fabulous, however, just long term, I'm not sure if that's a good plan going.
Sustainable.
It's not, it's not sustainable.
I wouldn't disagree with you. I appreciate your forward thinking on this.
Well, I, I can't claim all of it, Donna did mention this before she left.
Nice.
Well, I appreciate your and Donna's forward thinking on this.
If nothing else, Ms. Falcon?
Hey, next we have the sidewalk fund, um, I still have not been notified if we were successful in receiving either of the two CDBG sidewalk grants that, applications that we submitted. Um, I, I think we should be hearing soon, though, whether we've successfully received them or not, so this is, if we get the money, we'll do these two projects, if not, we'll reapply again next year.
Sounds completely appropriate.
Yeah. Uh, next fund, general obligation, um, debt fund, this is a required fund since we have, um, general obligation bonds out there, and this also is where the fire station, uh, tax revenue comes in, and the fire station bond principal and interest are paid out of this. Um, required fund.
We have that on a fifteen year, right?
I'm sorry?
The, the fire station is on a fifteen year?
Um, yes, yep.
That was Counselor Nixon that advocated for that. Which was amazing, I mean, it's harder, but it's a whole lot less money.
Yep, well, in addition to the increase in property value here in the community, uh, that's cut that millage rate very low.
Yes.
I think originally we talked about something like three or four percent.
Right.
Ended up being low two percent.
Yeah.
Sorry, two mils.
Yeah, two mils, as opposed to like, and we looked at three different timeframes, and we went
Yep.
the shorter one, even though it meant a bigger bite, as we said at the time, this is a heavy lift for our community, but I'm, and, and Counselor Nixon is the one who advocated heavily for that, that was not a unanimous vote. And I give her a lot of props for willing to do the right thing.
Hey, the next fund we have is the West Street Utility Project Fund. Um, Dean's Landscaping was awarded this project, uh, one point one two one million dollars. Um, they should be getting going on that shortly as well, um, we received eight hundred seventy-two thousand, uh, EVA grant funding for this. And then the city will bond for. And then the city will bond for up to seven hundred thousand, but I, I think more realistically, we're looking at about four hundred and fifty thousand is what we'll have to bond for. So in the news, since that, this project will start before July one, um, it's, the budget's probably going to have to be adjusted either way. Um, just on the timing of when the, the actual majority of the bills are paid, so. We, we have a budget for it, so.
And then just so a small update for council, uh, I'm currently working with Right Place to identify, um, somebody who can come out and evaluate the value of the properties. Uh, because we're anticipating selling about thirty-eight and a half acres.
I was going to ask how one comes up with that.
Uh, it's a lot of things. Um, he's given me a checklist of information to provide, whatever. Um, and council will have some decisions to make about that because uh, I, I think we've anticipated this whole time that, you know, we would be the owners of the property, we'd be approached by businesses and then sell them the property. The Right Place is now saying, you know, land right now, good land with utilities is so hard to come by.
Yeah.
That there might even be willing a large investment corporation who might come in and say, yeah, we'd like to buy thirty-eight and a half acres from you. And just be done with it. And then they start selling, you know, for business development. So this would all come to council. Um, we do have at least one business that's interested in being out there. Um, so we may sell them that parcel and then do something with the rest of it, but it's active and I fully anticipate not only paying that amount back, but having money left over at the end.
You have a question?
Ms. Hamilton, do you have a question?
No, I was just commenting on that if it went to one buyer, then we wouldn't be able to control the, like, other businesses that went in there, but we probably still would because we'd have to give them like permits and stuff.
Uh, yeah, so I mean.
We can't control in the sense that we can't discriminate or just deny or.
So planning and zoning, if they meet legal requirements.
Right.
But it's industrial use.
Correct. So we do have a table of uses of what would be permitted use. Of course, there's other things involved, like.
Does the PUD overlay go out to any of that?
There's no PUD that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But for instance, one of the big things is food producers. Um, they use a lot of water. Well, we can't allow a food producer to come in if we don't have wastewater treatment capacity.
Right.
But with the new storm drain, reducing our monthly by, I think, four million gallons.
Ridiculous amount.
We do have a significant amount of wastewater. Matter of fact, I was talking with Gary the other day. He says he actually needs more people to flush their toilets because he doesn't have enough water right now.
Interesting.
To do the microbial whatever. Um, so, you know, we have the capacity if some high water user need to come in.
Some carrot peeler. That's one that.
Was a lot. Be like, for lack of a better word, fun for the community in terms of like new businesses that you can.
Yep, so again, this is all meetings I'm going to be having. I do have a huge meeting coming up on the twenty-fourth, some, two weeks from today. Um, with the Right Place. The Right Place is kind of like the West Michigan, you know, assistance in getting governments and, and businesses together. Um, and one of the questions I had from them was, well, what is the city's goal? And I told them, look, we got four hundred fifty thousand bucks that we got to pay ourselves back. But that's ten thousand an acre. I mean, that's piddly. That's nothing. Um, so he said, well, do you want jobs? Do you want capital investment? You know, what are you looking for?
Yes.
I think that's pretty much what my answer was. Um, you know, obviously we want jobs. But do I care if it's a hundred and twenty jobs versus a hundred and eighteen jobs? No, I don't. Um, I'd much rather have better jobs versus more jobs, right? Um, and then capital investments. I mean, theoretically, somebody could come out there and say, well, I'm going to spend a hundred thousand bucks on a building and that's it. Well, I think we'd rather than spend fifty million dollars on a building, right? So there's a lot of discussion moving forward.
Probably jobs are not the.
Yeah, so the more that they spend on the building, the more the property tax.
Property value is. So then the more that we can recapture back in taxes. But then on the jobs piece of it, like we did for the display pack, do you remember when we did the, um, was that a TIF?
IFT.
An IFT. And we attached a certain number of jobs to it. I don't know that that's as critical. I mean, I feel like we have lots of jobs for people. We don't have enough people for the jobs that we have is actually more the issue. So to reiterate your hundred and eighteen versus hundred and twenty year.
Yeah, this is going to be a decision that the council will obviously be part of. Um, but I, you know, I have to wrap my head around it because it's not what I do on a daily basis.
Right.
So it's not set in stone what would be there.
No.
Well, there is.
Like, do you see what I'm like saying, like a factory versus a, this would never happen, but a Target? Like, you know what I mean?
A Target's not a.
Yep, so again, in zoning, there are a certain number of things that are permissible to be out there.
Okay, so that one is, it would just be like.
Just industrial buildings.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Falcon?
Okay, moving on to the sewer fund. Um, couple of things to highlight in the sewer fund. Um, the ordinance that council, um, approved in the past was an annual increase of either two percent or, um, rate of inflation based on consumer price index of the Midwest, something or other. That, that is seven point nine percent. I personally can't see charging, you know, increasing rates by seven point nine percent. So the budget you see in front of you is a two percent increase. We do have prices for three percent, four percent, and five percent. Um, I shared them with the manager. I, Mike, did you have a chance to forward that to council?
Yep, council's seeing all those.
The, the rate increases.
Yeah, there's an email.
So whatever, um.
I've seen there is. Marty's laughing at me.
Whatever rate you guys, what, what are you guys thinking? Mike, what is, what is your recommendation?
Uh, I think this is something we'll have to talk about at a regular meeting. Um, let them have a little more time to think about it. But one of the things I did point out to council is that there's really kind of four or six things going on here. We have a water rate and a sewer rate. Uh, those could be split and done differently. We also have, uh, usage fees and flat fees. So we could increase one of those more than the other or less than the other, um, to come up with an appropriate amount.
Didn't we, we just had a big increase correctly, correct? I mean.
So in twenty sixteen, when I came on board, I think it was fifteen percent or something.
Yeah.
Um, but since then, we've had very minimal two percent, I think, every year.
Yes.
And, and that's fine, but, you know, inflation is eight percent this year.
Correct. But I, um, I don't know why, but I thought we did something last year that all of a sudden we, we had a bigger increase.
I don't think so. I think it was two percent last year. Ms. Falcon, do you remember what it was last year?
I, two percent, yep.
Okay, I just, I just know there was a lot of complaining going on.
We got the new readers that were more accurate and that changed.
So it made people get, yeah, have an increase. So that's just what I was wondering about.
Well, what happened is they're paying for all the water that they actually.
For what they're using, huh?
Um, we did have, now, help me with this. We took out, Rose, how long ago was this? The grant for the water treatment plant. It was a USDA grant?
Twenty fifteen.
Okay, twenty fifteen, three point two million?
Um, I think sewer was two point one.
Two point one.
And water was almost a million.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm, 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 I'm in the ballpark.
So how.
Yep.
Right in here somewhere.
How are we doing? Like, now, does the water have to pay? Don't we have to pay for that? As part of?
Yes, they're, yes.
Part of our budget.
The very last page of the sewer fund shows the two bond payments. Twenty fifteen bond with Isabella Bank, our principal is a hundred and five thousand.
And I think that's the increase you're thinking of in two thousand sixteen when we added that piece onto it.
Ms. Edgerson, you, you look like you had a different question, though.
No, I just, I, I just, um, no, things had gone up and I, yeah, the other question I had was, um, so how are we doing in that? In, do we have a, a lot of wiggle room with that two percent? Or, do, you know, I mean, I, are we going to talk about it at our next meeting? Should I just, should we just move on?
Definitely talk about it at our next meeting. Um, but, you know, the, the short answer is you get to the end of this and you're going to see that we're one forty to the bad right now.
Yeah, I see that.
Now, part of what we do every year is we add in about two hundred thousand dollars depreciation. Um, which I know Darla hates me calling this, but it's like a magic, you know, money there. Um, because we're not actually spending it. What we're doing is saying we need to reserve two hundred thousand dollars every year because over a fifty-year lifespan, we need to invest that much money back into our system, otherwise it just crumbles to dust.
And there could be a major.
Yeah, of course, huge.
Something could happen, yeah.
Um, but also, this is a growing community. We've got the, the wells, the water wells, you guys, we're working on that. Uh, we probably need a water tower. That's a huge.
That's huge.
Billion, million and a half. Um, all sorts of problems, uh, and, and growth and everything else.
I mean, remember when we had to paint the last one?
Yeah.
The water tower? I mean, that would.
So we do pay a, a contract rate each year, which is in here, I'm sure, somewhere. Um, but if, if you're looking for my recommendation at this point, it's probably going to be between two and a half and four. Probably toward, towards the top of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one other. So when this bond on the US, it's not a bond, but the loan payments on the grant come off, will we be able to, like, have that absorbed? Will we be able to, like, will we see a dip?
So I think the answer is neither you nor I will be here when those come off.
Got it.
So we're, we're doing the appropriate thing for the future.
Got it.
Um, yeah, it, that's a huge bond. It's.
It was.
I think it's thirty years.
Was it thirty?
Twenty fifty-five.
Oh, wow.
But, uh, we, we invest in our, our waste, I'm sorry, we invest in our clean water Jerry Hall plant every year. Um, and obviously the water side, we're going to be putting a lot of money into here shortly.
That plant exists because of his forethought to write the grants and, so thank you for that, Jerry.
And our crew that takes care.
Jerry and the crew, they're amazing.
I have a quick question about the percentage raise.
Absolutely.
So if we do more this year, like the, we say we do like three point five, does that set us back on track to only do two next year? Or can we split the difference and do like, I don't know, three and three?
Yeah, so, uh, these, the, these utility systems are never going to be solved in a magic bullet year of, you know, five percent this year versus two percent next year. We're looking at a twenty, forty-year cycle, really. So whether we do two percent this year or whatever, um, really, we're smoothing out over an average, which is why we have the ordinance in place. Um, so really, uh, we should be doing eight, because that's what the inflationary index is. But, you know, eight percent to the citizens is.
It's huge.
Brutal. So what we're saying is, okay, two percent are normal. If we increase it three and a half or four percent, and then next year inflation goes back down to something more reasonable, uh, instead of having eight this year, we'll do three this year and maybe three next year, which gets us to six, you know?
And at some point, inflation might drops and then we won't.
That's what you were.
Yeah.
But council, under the ordinance, council has the authority by resolution to modify, and this is what we're proposing. Otherwise, we would have set it at Darla, seven point eight, seven point nine percent.
Yeah.
But you guys live.
Make this a big, large public service announcement because.
Well, yeah, so I'm, I get it. Water, water and sewer is expensive here. Um, but it costs what it costs. There is no slush fund. There is no magic.
You know, I work in a place where there's signs on the drinking fountain, signs on the sinks that say, do not drink the water, so.
So.
Well, it has to do with population. I mean, we are a very small city.
Right, and then you just don't have enough people to split it against, right?
Yeah, so I mean, there are fixed costs.
And that's what is.
I mean, we have, we have a plow truck, right? A plow truck costs two hundred thousand bucks. It's going to be the same cost whether it's here or Sand Lake. Um, so there are fixed costs like that with the water and sewer systems. Um, but we, I don't even know if it's a year and a half ago now, did a full, complete study of our water systems by an out, you know, third-party contractor. And they said, this is what your system costs to operate.
Right.
And that's how we set the rates.
Okay. And I don't know that it's even that we're really on the low end of, I mean, we're actually kind of on the high end of our capacity, am I right? Like, that's why we need, we're looking at adding more capacity.
Yes, so capacity for the water system, uh, we're kind of bumping up against.
Right.
Which is part of why we need that new well. Also, well number three is losing capacity. Um, so that's the Ash Street property that we're working on. Uh, now, the wastewater treatment plant is actually in fairly good shape, in my opinion, due to the infiltration and the storm drain.
And then the three million dollar.
Yep, but we are also talking about a hundred and eight new homes that are going in in the Prairie Run neighborhood and potentially a hundred and sixty-five apartments, which I'm sure is the tip of the iceberg. So.
And then some other additional possible houses.
Industry.
Cherry Street. And our school.
Couple Cherry Street, but I think the short answer is the more users you have on your system, the lower the cost for everybody can be.
Okay, because I came from Wyoming, which has like seventy thousand people.
Yeah, oh, yeah, huge.
Way different. Way big. Thirty, what are we, thirty-seven?
Which is fine. I, I think, I mean, at least for me, when I understand what the numbers are, it makes more sense.
Yeah.
And you can just be like, okay, it is what it is. As opposed to just being like, three times more than the place that you.
I figure we have about four thousand people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Population.
Yep, okay.
I will tell you, staff has no problems with, you know, if we're ma- making too much money, uh, recommend that we reduce the rates, too.
Right.
But inflation's a thing.
Now, if we're one forty down, we're not.
And we had to play catch-up.
Oh, yeah, well, as Ms., uh, the Madam Mayor says, I mean, for ten, fifteen years prior to us being here, they weren't increasing the rates.
Even two percent?
No.
Like literally.
No, no, no.
Not an appropriate way to run your system.
Right, no.
We were not even, we were, we were not even holding our own.
So this is partially making up for lost time.
Okay, alright, thank you for.
Ms. Falcon, you got anything else on the sewer fund?
I do not. So moving on to the water fund, um, the proposed budget you have in front of you, um, includes the two percent increase for the ready-to-sir fee and the, um, usage as well, an increase of two percent. Um, overall, this puts forty thousand dollars in the fund balance. Um, the big ticket item in the water fund this year is, um, if, a lot of ifs here. If the water study is positive for the property at the end of Ash Street and we have acquired the land by July one, um, it will be an additional hundred and five thousand for, um, the new well. Um, but one thing I wanted to point it out, you were just talking about, like, you know, is two percent enough? Um, if you remember, we just bid out the, um, Red Hawk Drive. Um, we're putting in a, a new main from Muskegon up to the high school. We budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand, but the contract that came in for Davis was two hundred and eighteen thousand. That, that's what you have to keep in mind. We did. So when we were just talking about rate of inflation, so we, we thought, uh, you know, a year and a half ago that we could do that project for a hundred and sixty. But the bids that came in, low bid was two hundred and eighteen. So that's just the cost of all the materials that we have no control over. Therefore, we need to, we need, we need to keep increasing our rates to have money to do projects like that. And unforeseen, you know, how much the project is really going to come in at. Due to, you know, we, we can't control what the cost of water pipe is going to be this year or next year. So just wanted to point that out.
Absolutely, thank you.
Um, next we have the equipment fund. Um, this is the fund I mentioned earlier on in the general fund. Um, we're taking, we're transferring fifty thousand from general fund to the equipment fund. That'll give us a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. If we can bring in the revenue from the water fund, the sewer fund, the street funds, so on and so forth. Um, the equipment has to be out there being used to, to charge those funds and transfer the money here. Um, what we would like to purchase this year, um, is a new box, a salt box, and add a wing to the Sterling plow truck that we bought a couple of years ago. Um, that price tag is sixty-five thousand. That puts us eighty thousand in the hole. So, so just maintaining our equipment, we're just barely maintaining it at these current rates. We, we have no money in the bank to buy additional equipment. Um, we do have two years left to pay off, um, the new plow truck that we financed three years ago. That was a five-year loan. So maybe once that's paid off, that's twenty thousand a year.
Okay.
Maybe once when that's paid off, we can take out another loan for, if the backhoe is next on our list to replace. Um, we can do the same thing with that. Any big ticket items.
Now, did the new fire truck come out of the? Now, did the new fire truck come out of the, I shouldn't say new, the new used fire truck? Did that come out of the equipment fund or the fire fund?
Fire fund.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
I'm sorry, before Ms. Hamel, Ms. Falcon, did that come out of the fire fund or the general fund fund balance?
Well, general fund fund balance.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I got what you're saying. I just want to clarify, Ms. Hamel.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Why wouldn't we use the extra from the fund balance, I think it is? Or this extra?
What do you mean? Well, I mean, so.
Get a loan for this thing that she said next year, if we can just pay out of pocket and not pay the interest.
Use the extra from where?
Fund balance.
Seven.
Yeah, fund balance.
That's kind of where it, it does eventually.
That is where it comes from, ultimately.
This, this is a unique kind of fund. Um, the, the income that comes into this fund is, okay, so we have a plow truck. And to use the plow truck, the bill charges, uh, twenty-five bucks an hour or something. So if he goes out and plows for eight hours, that's two hundred dollars that he charges as revenue to this fund. Well, if you have a mild winter and you don't push that much snow, there's not a lot of revenue coming into this fund. So we add fifty thousand bucks each year from the general fund, uh, to make up kind of for these mild winters and other issues that we, you know, don't have.
Cause you still have to have a plow truck, even if you don't have to go plow snow on a given day.
So the usage of those plow trucks is kind of the revenue here. And then the expenses is replacing and fixing and maintenance of gasoline on those vehicles.
But shouldn't we know what that is to make it closer to not to zero as opposed to eighty thousand? That's way off.
How much it's going to snow next winter?
No, but in terms of like the repairs and stuff, we don't.
Oh, but if it snows a lot, then those billable hours come back to it and we can actually end up like with extra.
Yep. So if we get a lot of snow next year, we end up billing a lot more money, uh, to the usage of the plow truck.
Aren't we billing ourselves?
Yes. But that's why I say this is a slightly unique fund in the way that the accounting works on it. So the money's coming from other places in the budget.
Right.
Um, but then, you know, the expenses are maintaining the trucks and buying the trucks and putting gasoline in the trucks.
Just to clarify, don't we do part of this because of the way the state wants us to allocate our equipment usage to show depreciation?
I'm sure Darla has some words in her vocabulary for that, but yes.
So it's, it's a way of, because the state won't let us, I mean, we get penalized if we don't do it this way.
So is this just, it is what it is and you accept it as part of the city budget or are we supposed?
Well, in a municipality, your, your major street fund can't own a backhoe. It can't own a plow truck.
Yeah.
So you have to have an internal service fund. That's where your equipment is stored and maintained.
Yeah, so as the mayor is saying, the state tells us how we can do some of these accounting practices.
Okay, so this is what it is.
Right.
Cause they're saving us money.
Yes.
To make it close to zero, but so they're, they're saving us money.
It's just an accounting practice. We have to have the numbers and track them somewhere, and this is how we do it.
And if we, if we get a lot of snow, we actually end up flipping that.
Hasn't been that way in a couple of years, though.
Two thousand thirteen.
Oh, Mr. LaRose, if you're still there, uh, I know we talked briefly about maybe changing the rates, uh, that we, we bill here. Now, do we have, I'm assuming that the, the rates that we currently use are State of Michigan rates? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. So we use, uh, State of Michigan in their M dot rates is what they are. So even this year, what we did is we, uh, looked at that and Darla was kind of talking about, said, well, there's no reason we can't charge more than that. We can't, we just can't charge less than that. So we went through on some of the equipment that doesn't run a lot and added twenty-five percent to the rental rate on it. To kind of improve this fund. And then we'll look at it yearly. Um, uh, it may have to go up more. And you just don't know. And, you know, it's like you've been saying, you can't predict snowfall. And you have a real good snowfall year, it puts some money in the bank. And we haven't had a real good snow year in quite a few years. So we've just been drawn out of that bank without really putting a significant amount, amount of money back into it.
Essentially, it literally doesn't matter because we're paying ourselves correct from our own fund. So like, it either stays with you or you pay more to yourself, right?
I think it's a little more complicated than that, but yes.
As much as I need to understand, like Darla needs to understand it, but like I.
Right.
That's, yeah.
I would point out one additional thing before we move on, and that is, uh, as Ms. Falcon indicated, sixty-five thousand for a new box and a wing for the Sterling. I did ask Mr. LaRose if we could make that box out of cardboard, and he said no.
Sorry.
There's good cardboard.
Legos. I would like Legos.
Legos might work, but might be more expensive.
Uh, I would agree with that.
Ms. Falcon, perpetual care?
Yep, this is a required fund because we have, we own our own cemetery. Um, part of the fee that when people buy a lot, um, they pay a fee to this perpetual care fund. And that's just building money to forever maintain our cemetery, required fund.
And then, so correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't, can't actually touch principal there that is purely one hundred percent.
Correct.
Interest-bearing fund?
Correct, yeah.
Are we charging enough?
Uh, I don't know. Is that rate set by anything in particular, Ms. Falcon?
Um, we call around other area cemeteries, um, every year and see kind of how we compare for the lots. Um, we do have resident fees and non-resident fees. Um, so there is a difference there in the, in the rate.
But like, you pay a one-time fee. And then.
To buy a lot.
To buy a lot that includes perpetual care costs. It's a one-time cost.
Correct.
But then, your, your, your family member's grave is maintained forever.
But that's why she's saying, that's why.
I know, but I don't, I just don't know that it's enough.
Well, and Ms. Falcon, again, you do this more than I do, but is there any municipality out there, uh, that uses this fund exclusively for maintenance of their, uh, maybe it's a bill question, but, uh, exclusively for the maintenance of their cemetery or not?
No, not, not until, we can't touch this money, I believe, until our cemetery is like closed and there's no more, we can't sell any more lots. The perpetual care maintains it, mows the grass, you know, so on and so forth, whatever you need to do in the cemetery.
Right, but is there enough in the perpetual care fund to actually do that?
Well, the, the way I look at it is perpetual care is the emergency reserves that at the end of the day, if, you know, we, we're bankrupt.
Okay.
We'd still have a couple thousand bucks a year to do something.
Got it.
There's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the perpetual care fund.
Cause I, my understanding is, and I guess maybe I was looking at it incorrectly, that the interest off of that is what you're supposed to use to maintain this cemetery.
We do, but I'm pretty sure we supplement with general fund dollars.
I, well, I know we do.
Absolutely.
Of like, should the perpetual care fee be more money?
Hmm.
Uh, I thi- I think this is similar to my answer on this, uh, water and sewer. You can't solve it by raising the fees.
Okay.
A long-term, you know.
Got it.
Moving out thing.
That was it for my presentation. Um, the additional pages are just more detail per fund on the, um, capital improvement plan.
As always, highly readable, highly understandable. I am greatly appreciative of all of the staff that have in, given you input on their needs for their departments, from Bill to Marty to Rebecca to Mike to everyone. Any questions?
Is, this does go out, right? For people to read?
Yeah, this is, we're not voting on this. This is the proposed. So then we're going to come back and vote on it. I, is this live on our, our webpage yet?
So this, uh, agenda is on the city's website, like every agenda.
Every agenda, okay. And it includes the budget.
Also, just briefly, this is not a proposed budget. This is a draft budget.
Right.
We do have, DDA fund is incomplete at this point. Um, so we will continue to work on it, but this is, you know, ninety-eight percent.
Right, well, and as, as Ms. Falcon just said, there's a grant we're waiting on. And there's, I mean, there's several, and there's things we went out to bid that we don't have a price yet and, um, but this is, this should be live for people with the sense that it's a draft.
I think, well, I guess.
Molly, do you have a question?
I do. So we have to, uh, wind back a little bit, because, um, we kind of blew past it. So there was a line item in the DDA for ten thousand dollars for an assistant city manager. Um, I was hopeful that we were going to hire an assistant city manager.
We, we actually had that at the very beginning. We're looking, we have fifty-five thousand.
Sixty-five altogether.
Sixty-five, fifty-five in another budget, plus this ten from the DDA. So sixty-five altogether. And the current hope is, we're in a, is negotiation the right word? Discussion with Sparta to split an assistant manager.
So instead of sixty-five for us, it would be twenty-five to thirty for each of us and split it that way.
Okay, then they would be here like Tuesday, Thursday, and there Monday, Wednesday.
Okay, well, I thank you for catching me up. I apologize for not being able to be there in person, but work was a little unforgiving today.
Of course, absolutely. But that's the current, and if, if you, um, have a strong feeling about whether or not we should do that or if we should be pushing to try to get a full assistant. I think the current plan is we would, we would try the half city manager and kind of see how that works with mitigating the workload.
It's partially that, and the reason, Ms., um, Nixon, why maybe, uh, the, the ten thousand, the DDA budget, is I can handle the city council and the planning commission fairly well. Um, but I do not feel like I have sufficient time to do the DDA work, and especially with their budget the way it is now. I think they can accomplish a lot more if they had more staff time dedicated to them. Uh, so my hope is that at least part of the new assistance, um, uh, work would be working for the DDA and trying to accomplish their goals. So that's why we put ten thousand of the DDA's budget there, and the rest is budgeted in general fund.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Do you have any, you can have some?
Any other questions on that? Hello, Ms. Kyla.
Ms. Powell, you seem like you are ready.
Oh, I, I just had a question about, um, the, uh, CIP summary, uh, under the water fund. A new well, a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Yep, so, um, I think forty of that is for peerless, who is our well digging experts. Uh, they're going to go out and give us an opinion about whether that is an appropriate site for future well development. I believe we have, um, sixty-five-ish, uh, for the purchase of the property. Now, that's a little in flux because we're working out with deans exactly how much we want to purchase and whatever else. But this is just the initial foray into the development of that well. Um, I think Mr. LaRose indicated this is going to be five to six hundred thousand dollars all told.
And we're looking at doing this over the course of five, six years?
Well, I think we'd like to have it within two years.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what, how we're going to fund it entirely, but this is the first step.
I understand we have to have that well ASAP.
Um, so, uh, you know, like everything, we try to anticipate problems before they occur. Um, and well, in the house number three is our oldest well and it's lost capacity. Um, now, again, Bill, Bill can explain this in greater detail, but Eagle, who's a kind of our oversight from the state, um, they say, hey, look, you're developing very fast. We need you to make sure that you can have enough water in the system for the hundred and eight new homes, a hundred and sixty-five apartments, whatever. So there's a formula that they use based on maximum, you know, amount that we can produce each day. Um, and because of well free dying, um, maybe that's not a good word, ailing.
Decreasing capacity.
There you go. Thank you. Um, our, our daily capacity is just a little bit lower than we'd like it to be with all the anticipated development. So the new well is necessary for the long-term new development. It's also backing up wellhouse three, which we don't know where they're going to be at. Yeah, and, and we'd like to have it sooner than later.
And we can't have it, like, we have to make sure we have enough capacity. We can't, if we depressurize at any point, that's a huge problem. So.
Seem like a hundred and five thousand dollars was awful cheap, but that's just.
Yes. You're like, wow, that's a deal. Where do we sign?
Do we get a couple of them?
Well, deal. But that's just the preliminary.
Correct, that's this year's anticipated.
That's like the down payment.
And the whole system would include a second water tower.
Uh, again, that's anticipated problem that we're looking at. Um, I think the water wellhouse is more important at this point.
Right, but I'm saying this whole piece of this upgrade.
We got a whole plan.
Yeah.
And our school's growing too, so it's not.
Yeah, they're putting, they have an addition going on right now.
Well, and that's why the, uh, Red Hawk, uh, water main project this year is so important.
Yeah.
Yep. Plus it helps the city out, man, so it works.
And then I have been told by the mayor, Ameritas, to make sure that the council knows we need, um, to extend, and I just looked at a map with him the other day, um, across to the, and I don't do east, north, southwest very well. But if we lose that section, we lose water to that entire piece of town, including the nursing home.
Yep, so this is what keeps Bill and I up at night, um, our worst nightmare scenario.
Right.
Now, um, Ms. Mary, you, you've been in these meetings with the apartment complex.
Yes.
Um, one of the, um, carrots of that project is the potential for closing that loop.
Right.
With the terminology we use, um, where we extend a second water line. So our current water line runs along seventeen mile road to the corridor. That's the only water line.
So if something happens to that, that entire section of town loses water.
Everything west of Taco Bell is without water.
Which is sort of problematic.
Problematic. So the intent is to close the loop from the water tower going west and then tying into the system. But, uh, more to come.
Yeah. So I, I got, I mean, and you know, the water, of course, is his, so. And he's not wrong.
And fire department, that's.
Right, but I mean, but especially, well, you can't have a fire department without water.
I touched on everything, didn't I? Uh, council, have any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Ms. Falcon, do you have anything else for us?
I do not.
Ms. Nixon, did we get everything you need?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Hamel, you got here a little bit later to, it.
Yeah, I listened to everything and I.
I'm sure you did, but I mean, did you get an opportunity to ask everything?
She answered everything.
Okay, and Ms. Powell?
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am, I'm. I'm on board.
Okay, cause I mean, this is, you know, this is a big part of, this is our job.
Yes.
All right, then. Moving on, oop, wrong agenda. So with that, council comments. Ms. Powell?
Um, sorry I was late. I, I've been ill.
I'm sorry.
Just kind of snoozed off for a few minutes and, uh, forgot your call, but my phone was in the car in my purse.
You would have been excused.
Anyway, uh, happy Saint Patrick's Day to everybody. You had a beautiful day and the sun is coming and, uh, can't wait for the flowers to start popping up. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gross.
For all of us, the budget is a very important part of our job. Somewhat painful in looking at what you have to spend. It's more painful in thinking where we will be if we don't spend it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so you have to balance the two. And I think, uh, what's been presented in front of us is a very good representation of what we have to do. And, uh, I appreciate all the work that went into getting it done. And, uh, that's about it.
Okay, is that just?
Well said. I think I'll just go with what you said.
Yes.
I think it was, you know, budget's never fun, but I love the pictures, so that helps out a lot. Um, but it really just is so, it's explained so clearly and it really helps. I mean, it's, you know, I, after going through something this thick and not understanding completely, I only had a few questions, so that's pretty good, so. Just great job, great job.
Ms. Nixon, do you have anything?
Thank you for putting this together, Darla. It was very clear and easy to read. Thank you.
Ms. Hamel?
Um, yeah, I agree. This is my first time going through something like this and I understood it really well. You did an awesome job, uh, Ms. Darla. And, um, yeah, I appreciate being able to ask questions about it, because it's nice to be able to explain when people ask questions. About why we're spending what we're spending.
Um, I will just close with, and, and I've said this to you before, Darla, you do an amazing job in this budget. And our, um, auditors tell us even what an amazing job you've done, you've done, and having been on the school board and the library board, and I think you're my third finance director here. You, you are just phenomenal at this. I don't even know how to say how, like, gold stars everywhere. And then, overall, we should think of a budget, and you should think of this in your own priorities as well, is a reflection of your values. Money, how we spend our money is about what we value. And so if we value our fire department and we value our water and we value our roads and our parks, that's where we spend our money. And that's how we need to think of it. It's, it's not a, um, a burden. It's an expression of what our community values, and it's our job here as council to make that happen. So I appreciate everything that you all bring to the table, but think about it in that capacity about you are helping to express the values of our community by where we put our money. And with that, we're adjourned.